Okay, we'll call this meeting to order. It's Tuesday, November 16th, 2021. Special Boards and Directors Meeting. Concerning wastewater rates. Madam Clerk, would you do the roll call, please?
Yes. Director Brett Echols.
Here.
Director Arthur Perry.
Here.
Secretary Arlene Schaefer.
Here.
Vice President Mike Schaefer.
Yes.
President Robert Uten.
Here.
Thank you.
So do we have any public comments?
No, Mr. President.
So we'll go on to the discussion item, Providing Staff Direction Regarding 2021 Wastewater Rate Study. Scott, will you lead that?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, Board of Directors. On November 9th, the Board had its first look at proposed wastewater rate adjustments, and if approved, will be the first adjustments in five years. The Board directed staff to bring back additional information for today's meeting. Specifically, the Board wanted to know how the proposed adjustments correlate with inflation. If you scroll down a little bit more on the... So, and your staff report is Figure 1. There you go. At least answers that question. And as you see, if the district had adjusted rates annually based on the CPI, the Consumer Price Index, the wastewater rate would be $130 and three cents annually by 2027, which is less than a dollar a month difference than the proposed rate RDN and staff has recommended to you. The Board also wanted to know how much of adjustments were made by other agencies. If you scroll down a little further, I'll let you go to Figure number 2. And I think we think Figure number 2 answered this question. And as you can see, Newport Beach, which is the agency that many residents like to compare ourselves to, had an increased rate of 145%. In addition, the Board had concerns of staff's capability of completing $12 million worth of capital improvement projects in the next five years. Since the hiring of Mark Esker, our district engineer, the district has doubled the number of projects that are designed, underway, and/or completed. We're on pace on completing 15 projects totaling over $3 million within a one-year period. That's more than double, we've more than doubled the amount of projects that we've done in one year than we've done in the previous year. On November 10th, the Citizens' Viceray Committee met to discuss the proposed rate adjustments. The committee recommends staff provide more information on what's causing the proposed rate adjustments. And some of those causes are identified in your staff report, which I'll read them out loud today. Stabilized rates, wastewater rates have remained stabilized and have not been adjusted for five years. Liability insurance, insurance costs have increased over 100% from $85,000 in fiscal year 2017-18 to $171,000 to this current fiscal year. The district budgeted $175,000 for insurance for '21-'22, or I'm sorry, this fiscal year, and $192,000 for next fiscal year. Labor costs, labor costs have increased 20% from $1.4 million in fiscal year 17-18 to $1.8 million to 2021. District budgeted $2.3 million in '22-'23 for new positions such as the district engineer, which was hired February of this year, and two additional wastewater maintenance workers that if hired, will enhance the frequency cleaning, the entire system, from 18 months to 12 months. The enhanced cleaning frequency will reduce the likelihood of sanitary sewer flows and avoid regulatory fines and/or potential lawsuits from non-governmental organizations. Equipment, the two new wastewater maintenance workers will need to operate a sewer cleaning unit. The district budgeted nearly $500,000 to purchase a new unit in '22-'23. The existing cleaning unit is scheduled for replacement in '24-'25 at a cost of $500,000. District safety protocols requires a pickup truck be parked behind the cleaning unit when staff is industry cleaning the sewer system. The pickup truck gives staff added visibility and protection from oncoming traffic. So a new pickup truck for the new wastewater maintenance workers is budgeted in '22-'23 for $77,500. Two existing pickup trucks are scheduled for replacement in '24-'25 and '25-'26 for a total of $136,000. And finally, the existing forklift at the R, which is over 20 years old, is no longer useful. The district budgeted $46,000 to acquire a new forklift in '22-'23. Diesel fuel, so diesel fuel for the fleet has increased over 46% from $3.06 in 2017 to $4.48 in 2021. And as we all know, visiting the Palma's gas continues to increase, and we probably foresee that to increase continually the next five years. Capital improvements, the district is planning to spend nearly $12 million on capital improvements for the next five years. Replacing infrastructure before failure is the best method to ensure optimum performance of the sewer system and avoid sanitary sewer flows. Computer license and maintenance, the district is expanding its technology usage to improve efficiencies and better serve the public. Due to continual threat of cyber attacks, increased IT security maintenance and monitoring is required. Computer licenses and maintenance costs have increased 83% from $95,690 in 17-18 to $175,400 in 2022-23. The CAC also suggested staff provide brief bullet points describing what caused other agencies to adjust their wastewater rates, as shown in Figure 2 above in your staff report. So as I mentioned, in Newport Beach, they had a 145% increase in their rate adjustment. That's because it's the, they had their first rate adjustment in 2018, which was the first adjustment in over a decade. And revenues estimates were insufficient to meet their operational expenditure requirements. Fund reserve balance was being used to cover the shortfalls, and without an increase of the wastewater rate, the projected sewer enterprise fund balance would drop below the city council reserve policy in one year and will completely depleted in years two. In the city of Placentia, they had a, they haven't had a rate increase in over 15 years, actually 16 years. They just had a rate increase in 2021, which is the first one since 2005. Current rates were insufficient to fund ongoing services and necessary capital improvements. Without a sanitary sewer system fee adjustment, the city's sewer enterprise fund will not have adequate revenues to cover operations and maintenance for sewer systems and conduct necessary capital improvement repairs. In the city of La Palma, wastewater rates were first adjusted in 2016. Their last rate adjustment was 2010. They needed a rate adjustment because their fund balance, sewer fund balance was projected to be depleted by 2019. Revenues did not keep pace with operations, maintenance, and capital needs. Now, South Coast Water, South Coast Water District was a little different. They had their rate adjustment in 2021. And the primary factor is to maintain, they had to maintain their debt service coverage consistent with the projections provided in the 2020, in 2020, when South Coast credit rating was reviewed. South Coast Water District was placed on a watch status by its rating agency when the district issued its 2020 bonds. And dropping below the debt service coverage could adversely affect South Coast credit rating, which could increase the cost borrowing. Finally, the CAC suggests that staff prepare a revised chart comparing rates with other Orange County agencies because the chart we showed last week had agencies, most notably the agencies down south of Orange County, included treatment costs in their rates. So if you can go to the next slide, please. So we've prepared a next slide for you, a rate comparison. And this is a rate comparison of Orange County sanitation member agencies. We are a member of Orange County Sanitation District, and OCSDs, member agencies, they get their treatment costs billed directly to them on their property taxes. And so to compare apples to apples, these are all the OCSD agencies. And as you can see, the average rate for OCSD members is $13.08. And our current and even our proposed rate for the single-family resident is below the average. I also wanted to mention to you, as I was preparing for today's meeting and also for next week's meeting, the Board Directors' meeting is we'll be sharing you the survey results from our consultants. Our consultants successfully surveyed nearly 1,200 residents. And one of the questions I want to share with you today, I think it's relevant today for today's discussion, is one of the questions that was asked to the resident was, is that, they said, "Single-family homes pay $7.70 per month for sewer service", which is one of the lowest rates in Orange County. "Would you support increasing sewer rates to $15 per month in order to provide the funds needed to repair, maintain, and improve sewer system?" 42% said yes. 32% said no. 24% said unsure. Go to the next slide, please. And as you see in this chart, again, our proposal, our DN proposal is that by '26-'27, the rate will go up to less than $12 a month. So that's still below, if everything remained constant with OCSDs, which we know that it's not, but if they were, it would still be low, the average OCSD. And according to our residents, they are comfortable with a rate increase up to $15 a month. CAC unanimously approved recommending the Board Directors consider approving proposed rate adjustments presented by RDN and staff, as shown on Table 1 above. Go back to that table, please. You gotta go back to the staff report. Yeah, you just go, just go scroll up. So they, the CAC recommended Table 1 for the Board's approval. Staff has recommended the Board Directors provide staff direction regarding the 2021 wastewater rate study and direct staff to bring this item back to the December 20th, 2021 Board Directors' meeting to adopt the study and set a public hearing date to comply with Prop 218. I also want to mention the Board, if you still want to consider after today's meeting, we still have two other dates you can, we can discuss the wastewater rates. We can discuss it next week at your regular Board meeting on November 22nd. We do have a study session scheduled for December 14th. We can also discuss that date as well. So I'm available to answer the questions. RDN is also here to answer any questions. So that concludes my presentation.
I have a question. What does it cost for a Prop 218 hearing? Let's say we did it in two years. What would be the cost for us?
I have to look at the budget. We budget, the primary cost is the postage, is the postcards. So we have to mail out the postcards and the mailing, and we hire a contractor for that. I don't know, Tom, man. Caitlin, do you remember what that cost was, what we budgeted for Prop 218? It was like $20,000, I believe?
I'm looking up right now. I'll give you that. One second.
Is that, that's still an option for us. We want to go that direction. Instead of a five-year increase, go to two years if the Board decides to.
Sure, you want to do a two-year rate, sure, sure.
I have a couple of the questions. I talked to somebody on the Planning Commission. You know, they, they said the multifamilies in Costa Mesa are overcrowded. I mean, that's part of the report that's going to the state. So I'm not sure if this rate that we're charging is enough because they're overcrowded in every, almost every one of the multifamily homes.
Yeah, I can defer that question to RDN, but we basically based, we, incorrect me wrong, you should go, but the rates are based on the data we have today. And even though they're projecting that, it's, we don't know that for sure. I mean, correct me wrong, Ichigo, that's what we, based on multifamily units is based on the data we have today. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. And the multifamily residential customers' rates have, will go up. And compared to residential customers, they will have a much bigger impact this time around. So their rates have been adjusted.
Director Perry is saying that maybe that needs higher. What, do you have any response to that?
Yeah, we did research the household size for multifamily residential customers. And we do believe, you know, their charges up here here should be sufficient to cover their costs.
Scott, the cost for Prop 218 is $12,000. We budgeted for fiscal year 2022-23.
Thank you, Caitlin.
I have one other question. When you said Newport's 145, is that for a one-year period?
That's for the whole five years.
So they already approved a five-year plan?
Yes.
A quick quote, Brett?
No, no, go ahead. Other than Mr. Esker driving this, like you mentioned in your first comment, don't look at me like that. Scott said that the biggest driver in this was Mark Esker. I think that is not what you said?
No.
Oh, I heard that wrong. I'm sorry.
I heard that too, but I like that. We like the increase of.
I'm being very facetious, Mike. It's too early. Overall, O&M's our biggest driver in all this, maintenance, and especially the maintenance.
I would say capital, capital, we're spending $12 million.
To me, that's part of maintenance, the capital improvements.
Well, I guess, I guess you could, because we do budget about $5 million in MNO. And no, it's, Caitlin, help me out, the $5 million, that includes capital, doesn't it? The $5 million we budgeted for wastewater?
I think it did.
Usually our MNO is around 3 million?
Yes.
Yeah, so.
So I mean, we're all faced with that. When you go through the list of the factors, I mean, there is no getting around any of those, whether it be the cost of insurance or diesel fuel. I mean, these are all real-world things that we're having to deal with, not just as an agency, but as families. I mean, I assume, and maybe this is for RDN, the fact that inflation is at all-time highs right now, has that been calculated into these? I mean, we didn't use last year's factors. We're using current cost of living adjustment factors.
Again, I'll defer to RDN. We did use inflations, and I believe it was less than 3%. Am I correct, Ichigo?
Yeah, let's see. I have a slide here. Overall inflation, right now, we are using a 2.57%. That might not include the most, most current month's data, but.
Close.
Yeah, it's definitely the recent year. We usually take, for other factors, we usually take 20-year average, but. Let me see, the overall inflation factor is about 3.5% for all the costs. So that's in line with the overall inflation.
When you do these calculations, is inflation the only factor? Do we look at like Construction Cost Index?
Yes.
Only inflation, correct?
Yes, that's, we use 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 different categories, different types of factors that include utility, inflation factor, equipment, personal cost, fuel, and automobiles, and the construction. I think one of the slides we shared with you show those are different factors. And then I think you do have that presentation still. But yeah, we use specific escalation factor for, you know, different expense item that.
I'm intimately involved with the Construction Cost Index. So I mean, we talk about capital improvements. We have to consider construction cost indexes in the capital projects, correct?
Definitely, yeah. And then in recent years, we all know that we had some, we had experienced some crazy increases in the construction cost.
Yeah, we have. I'm sure Director Echols knows that all too well.
Yes, and to capture that, for construction expenses, instead of using a 20-year average, we used a five-year average so that, you know, it will capture some of the most, you know, recent crazy trends.
Yeah, good call. Okay, thank you. Back to Scott. When we look at these other cities, other than South Coast Water District, they're all city-run functions. Like Newport Beach, Placentia, La Palma, those are, their wastewater is through the city, correct?
Oh, yes. Through the Orange County Sand District?
So Orange County Sand handles everything for them?
No, no, no. They, they, they have their own sewer maintenance system, yes.
Okay, so they've obviously been taking some losses over the last few years. Do they just slide that over into the general fund for those losses? Or how do they, is there's no way of really knowing, is there? Okay, my guess is that they look at their general fund and reserves and say, oops, we need to slide funds over there.
They could use general funds for sewers, sewer maintenance, definitely.
Two other, just real quick. When ADUs are built, we're notified because of fixture fees and things like that, right? I mean, that's how we find out the ADUs are going in.
That's absolutely correct. The city sends us typically the building plan requests they receive. We review them and confirm that, yes, they need a permit or not. And then if they do, we advise the property owner that they need a permit. But we are advised, and I'm going to say most of the permits applied for does include ADU.
Okay, so when we do an ADU, does the property owner get two sewer charges? Or is it all lumped into the main charge for the location?
Right, I believe right now, ADUs are not included in the assessments. One of the things that Scott and I and Caitlin are working on is what should the ADUs be assessed? And in fact, RDN, I will defer to them to comment on this, is developing a rate to charge the ADUs going forward because that is something that was not in our, in our rates of the last five years.
We haven't been charging for ADUs, essentially.
No, we have not.
And to me, just a, you know, an editorial comment, that's going to be critical because with the new housing, with HCDs, housing requirements, people are going to start doing ADUs. We're going to see an explosion of ADUs. And I don't think it's fair that, that I have to pay for me and my neighbor who might build an ADU is going to have, you know what I mean?
Yeah, so, so you see, look at this chart.
Yeah, no.
So they would get, so if they have a single-family resident, they'll get, I'm looking at '22-'23, so they'd be charged $95.18. And they have, if they have one ADU, they'd be charged $34.99.
Yeah, no, no, I, I realize, I guess my point is, I don't think we're charging enough for ADUs. I think ADUs, they're no different than a single-family. There's two people that live in my place. If I build an ADU, there could be three people and four people in there.
Yeah, yes, there absolutely could be. There are several factors that go into what we are proposing to charge for ADUs, square footages. And of course, there's ADUs that can be, I'll say, under 125 square feet. You have ADUs that are 300 square feet, 700 square feet, up to above 1,000 square feet. Most of them that we're seeing are probably, I'm going to say, between 3 and 700, 750 square feet. So, and again, I'll defer to RDN. But based on the numbers they were collecting from both the city of Newport Beach and the city of Costa Mesa, it appears that this number is a good number based on the average size of the ADU that is going in.
Okay, thanks for the square footage numbers. That makes, makes it a little clearer. And then my very last one is, what's the difference between a commercial average strength and a commercial high strength? I tried to find it in there, I don't remember reading it.
Commercial high strength is typically a restaurant that has grease.
I thought you might say that. So that's all for now.
Director Echols?
Yeah, thank you. So I've got a few. I guess, well, in watching the CAC meeting the other night or last week, whenever it was, they had mentioned, and I think you had just mentioned about the comparison between districts or cities. So did I hear you correctly? The South County, we're taking those out because they don't have the same facilities as we do OCSD?
Right, they take their, their wastewater is treated by the South Orange County Wastewater Authority down in Dana Point.
And so that's included in their rate?
Yes, we, and also I think Santa Maria Water has, too. So, so they, yes, they're, we believe it's included in their rates.
The Good and the Gal has their, Malt and the Gal has their own wastewater.
I think they use Santa Maria Rita, they operate Santa Maria East Park.
Is that, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay. Depending what we all do over the coming meetings, whatever happens, I think that's got to get taken out. Because I know the CAC was very critical about, or very passionate about sharing as much of this info in our public meetings or website and all that. That thing's got to get taken out then, or else people are going to get a distorted view. So that last graph we saw, that, that would be the right, that would be the winner, I think. Yeah, there you go. You're lucky I didn't aim that way, but. So moving forward, I actually agree with Vice President Schaefer on the ADUs. I think, you know, if we're looking to do something, that might, I just would be curious about a little bit different of a rate there, since we're starting at zero and we're going to 50 or, you know, 34 all the way to 51, maybe tweaking that a little bit. Now, for one of the graphs, we're, we're looking, or Figure 1 in our staff report looks at the rate, what it would track at, at using CPI. And if I understood correctly, that the CPI used was 3%, give or take, where a utility, the last presentation was say 5%, our general was 2.5 or whatever. I'm looking at more of an 8% per year increase using those numbers on our Figure 1. Am I missing something?
I'll defer that to Ichigo. Can you comment on Figure 1, because they're the ones, RDN prepared that graph for us? Or pull that graph?
For the inflation?
Yes.
Graph with the rates? Yeah, we actually used overall inflation factor for the specific year. Zach is not with us today, but that's what we did. So we actually used, you know, the specific years. Inflation factor for each year to escalate these factors. But, you know, to your point, though, I agree that using just overall inflation factor will probably estimate a little bit lower than, you know, where it should be. But to just add one more thing on this figure is that our recommendation, as Scott mentioned, is $138.08. That's the final use rate. Again, this is the maximum amount you can go up, right? So, you know, you might not implement, you might not actually do all the rate increases, implement all the rate increases, you know, based on your financial planning for that year. But this will give you a little bit of wiggle room if you were to implement. If, you know, everything goes, if everything follows this inflation rate, like if it really actually stays around $130, but, you know, but just setting a little bit higher, that will give you just a little bit of wiggle room if you need be. So I just need you to remember, you know, the rates we are presenting are the cap, the absolute maximum you can go up to.
Ichigo, do we have the rate breakdown? That one chart on your last presentation that showed a breakdown, and it showed the percentage of inflation that we used for, I'll say, construction costs, O&M costs. And if you have that available, that might be good to show our directors and refresh their memory of the inflation factors that we use. And I will say, while she's pulling that up, I will comment on the construction inflation factor that we used. They, E and R, excuse me, RDN used the E and R inflation factor for construction, which is typical for urban areas in Los Angeles. It's like a CPIU, but specific for our construction, our construction industry. And just this last, I'm going to say, 11 months, the inflation on construction material has increased about 9% just in this last nine months. Now, I believe we're not going to see 9% every year for the next five years, or at least, you know, I hope we're not going to see that kind of a rate. So RDN and under, you know, things that we look at is what will, we try to look at our crystal ball, and we look at what E and R says as far as where's the construction cost going to be in one year, two years, three years, four years, and five years? And we try to look at, use those inflation factors. But I guess realistically, what it will be will be anybody's, I'll say, educated guess. But we don't want to use 9%. And so we kind of look back at the last five, 10, 15 years and use a factor that's, I'm going to say, a lot less than 9%.
So there's a follow-up to that. So I'm still, I'm still confused because, okay, under the one model, you're talking about basically an 8% increase each year, which is higher than what we were quoting, lower than what you just said, I agree. And then the proposed rates are basically at a 10% increase every year for a total of 50. So something's not adding up for me, and maybe I'm just missing it.
So what's driving the increases? The biggest contributor is the capital improvement project costs.
I understand that, but one of the figures here is saying that this is just based on CPI increase, and I don't believe it is. It's tracking at eight, not five or four, or three. That, the figure we're looking at right now, the 130.03 is really 8% per year for a total of 40, whereas CPI would be anywhere from three to five, you know.
Oh, I see. Now I understand what you're asking. So, you know, when we escalate rates, we use cumulative, right? So this year, it's the 3%. Next year, I'm sorry, so from two years from now, that 3% is on top of the 3% increase of this year, right? So there is a cumulative factor. That's why, you know, in total, it looks like 30%, much bigger than, you know, just the three times five, let's say. But when we do increase rates, that's how we calculate. There is a compounding. But when we do increase rates, that's how we calculate. There is a compounding, uh, factor there. And that's how we calculated proposed rates as well. Um, and then, you know, we calculated als- also rates with, um, the highest, uh, rapid growth, uh, rates. And that's also calculated using the compounded factors. Um, again, you know, three years from now, you are increasing the three percent that year, but you're increased, increasing the three percent of, you know, already increased rates, right? Um, by three percent twice already in the previous years. Does that make sense? The compounding factor?
Yes, yeah, it, it makes sense. I just, okay, um, thank you. Um, in, in follow-up to Mark, your, your comment, and actually then it leads me to a question for Vice President Schaefer. I mean, I could already tell you in my business construction, it, it's not nine percent anymore and it's going down. I wish it would go like this, but we're going to assume that nine percent's not going to be here for very much longer. We're plateaued out and that deal, wood's already come down, but I don't like wood. I only like steel. But, um, separate discussion, uh, so Vice President Schaefer on, there was in our staff report just, uh, about the liability insurance. If memory serves, a big reason ours spiked was because our E and EMR went up significantly. So.
We're, you know, workers' comp. What, what we're looking at, and we had a SDRMA board meeting last week. The two biggest things we're looking at are the unavailability of, of property insurance, basically. The carriers that have to be used, when you're talking about agencies, we're not, we're talking about offshore, oversea, could be overseas, it could be domestic. Carriers are saying, we're not interested in insuring in California unless you put large retainers or deductibles, if you will, and we're going to charge you forty percent more. So we're, we're still negotiating that. I mean, that's part of SDRMA's job is to negotiate that. The other factor that's become extremely difficult, and I think Scott mentioned it when he was talking about, um, it, it boils down to cyber coverage, if, you know, the, the IT coverage. It is near impossible to get cyber coverage. There are carriers that are providing it at a cost that would make your skin boil. I mean, it's, it's unbelievable. So it, it's that, when, when you talk about the, the employee mod, that, that affects our workers' comp. Which overall, workers' comp is probably more than half our budget for insurance.
I, I almost anticipate E mod's going to go down this year.
It, the E mod, it will go down. So we'll see some relief there. I can't tell you that we're going to see a lot of relief in the property side. Especially with that, with, with, with the actual insurance of, of our stuff. But the cyber is going to kick things into overdrive. So I think we need to be prepared. I, I know Caitlin is aware of that. Um, she sees those bills all the time. So we need to be prepared for that as well.
Perfect. Thank you. And I think just one other question, uh, for Scott, uh, on the business side, the commercial average and high, I mean, have we gotten any feedback or reached out to any in the business communities, uh, chamber or anything like that about these potential increases?
No, we have not.
Okay. Is that something that in the past, maybe we've done? Do, would you foresee that?
We've never done that before in the past.
Okay, um, I lied. One other question. So, uh, multifamily residential, if I'm correct, basically over the period of five, uh, five years, that's going to have a hundred percent increase? Is that right?
Yes.
Versus everything else seems to be around fifty and then the trailer at eighty. So, um, I think it was mentioned earlier, we're, you know, maybe we're charging too less for multifamily, which I tend to agree, but I don't know if, uh, wh- where did that hundred come from? Versus everything else was around forty eight to fifty.
Right. So, oh, may I? Question. Okay. Um, I've been trying to share the screen, but I, it looks like I'm not authorized to do so. Um, but, um, yeah, we can. If you want us to show, share the screen, uh,
We're gonna get you to share it in a second.
Okay, great. Um, here. Do you, let me know if you, when you see the screen. Okay. So we can go back to escalation factors later. But yeah, that's, that's a really good question about multifamily residential customers. Um, let me just define that slide to explain how we calculated, uh, multifamily residential customers rates. One of the things that we've done to calculate multifamily residential customers that is different from the last rate study is we used fifty five gallons per day, uh, per person. Number for multifamily residential customers as well. In the old study, they used forty gallons per person per day. And then that is the biggest, you know, factor, um, how that impacted the rates. We argue that, um, per person usage shouldn't be different. You know, it's determined by indoor water usage, right? And that's really, you know, how many times you go to the bathroom or, um, how, how often do you take shower? It determines, um, based on those factors. So we did not use different per person per day usage for multifamily residential customers. We used the same number for fifty, um, multifamily residential customers, which is fifty five gallons per person per day.
That makes sense. Perfect. Okay. Thank you. That, those are the questions I had at this time.
So you're saying in multifamily, um, this, in single family, and I'm looking at the zip codes up there. Single family tend to be an older population. Right? Whereas multifamily will be a younger population. Your comment about number of times going to the bathroom and how much usage, it's escalated by a single family, old people. Is that right? I, I, I mean, that.
I disagree.
But it's probably true.
Objection.
Bad and useful. Whatever it, whatever. Sorry, but I mean, that is a factor. The, the older population. I mean, Bob has to get up like seven times.
But that's not based on quantity, quality.
Quantity. You know, quantity, not quality. You're right.
You know what I mean? You go like, you know, three or four times a night, but it's not that much.
Very good.
That's what we get for being in the wastewater industry. I mean, it's, it's a real fact, right, Bob?
Well, actually the charges are based on flow and string. So this is, you, you go more often.
You got enough track on this one. Sorry.
Oh, oh, Arlene.
Yes, thank you. Uh, two questions. One, do we, uh, keep a record of how many mobile home parks we have in the city? We do. Okay, now, in doing that, then that, that plays into the AEU because that's square footage and they have less, as you had said. So in other words, that breaks out the rate differently.
You're probably not going to have an ADU in a mobile home park though. Because, you know, we typically remember, um, from your playing game, we call them grainy units. It's where they build them above garages or they build a separate.
Yeah.
Most mobile home parks don't allow for.
Well, they don't own the property. They just own the trailer.
Generally, they don't own the property.
They don't own the land.
They don't have.
So if you use that, I don't know if that factor would come into play.
That's what I'm curious.
Yeah.
No, there's, there, we won't find any ADUs in a mobile home.
Oh, okay. So we don't have to, in the rates. Okay. I was just, you know, digging around.
Well.
That's a, that's a good question, but accessory ADU is, uh, the abbreviation for accessory dwelling unit. And then that's usually attached to, um, single family residential homes.
Okay, thank you.
State Farm, we call them she sheds.
Call them what?
Oh, yeah, she sheds.
She sheds.
Scott, Scott, do we get notice from when, see a lot of people on the east side are building additional units? Do we get notice of that?
Yes, the city will notify us, both Newport Beach and, and Costa Mesa will notify us.
I think if I could add, uh, really quickly here, the one point two five household size that you see here for accessory dwelling, dwelling unit ADU. This is, um, this is derived from your master plan. And we figured that's probably the most defensible source. Um, we did a consult with Newport, uh, beach as well. And they actually gave us the range of one to one point five. So one point two five, you know, pretty much fits in line with what they gave us. And that was good, you know, validation. But, uh, yeah, this one point two five, this number came from your most recent master plan.
Is, is that our district master plan or their city? Um, is that the housing unit, housing element she's talking about?
No, she's talking about.
But, but the housing element that's being considered through HCD, um, they're starting to consider ADUs at a higher household count, aren't they? I, that's some of the preliminary numbers that I had heard. When the Rena allocations went out, I think the ADUs, and maybe I'm confusing it with an average, but it seemed like there was an average for, for, under the Rena that was higher than one point two five household. Do you, does that make sense? Or do you know anything about that?
Uh, no, but I do believe that, uh, um, your district specific two thousand and twenty master plan might be more defensible source, uh, for your rates. Um, so, yeah, I'm not aware if they've used, um, you know, a higher number, but I do believe that one point two five, that number we're using to hear, um, is a good number, you know, because we can back it up with our own resource.
Good, good.
Well, um, you know, I'd like to comment on that and then some other things. I grew up in a four hundred square foot home and there were four of us in, you know, um, four, four of us in that, in, in that house. Um, you know, then we expanded it to almost eight hundred square feet and there were five of us in there. Um, so I, you know, I'll, I'll be looking forward to, you know, more comments on, uh, ADU. It, it doesn't take much space. Um, in, in, in my experience, to have four people living in a four hundred square foot unit. And some of the ADUs are, I, I think you mentioned three hundred, four hundred. Yeah. Also, I'd be interested, Scott, in and, and or, uh, the consultant in, um, the trend is um, less residential units compared to multifamily units. So there's less and less units available in my mind to, to put ADUs in, unless they build on the garage or in the garage or, um, you know, there's, there's a lot of the, a lot of the older properties in Costa Mesa probably have room for an ADU. I don't think many of them in, in the Mesa Verde area where I live have room for an ADU. I, I don't have, because it's only, uh, uh, I don't know what it is. I don't know what's property square footage is, but there's no place to put an ADU except in the garage. And, um, actually I have a couple of other questions that I'll go over and then we'll go back through the, the directors. Um, the staff report or the, the present estimate of cost is based on the decision to go from, for, uh, sanitary sewer overflows, cleaning the system from eighteen months to twelve months. I don't think that's a policy decision. You know, I think it's a, um, well, let me ask you, is, 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 nowhere in our policies do we have, ha- have we established that there's an eighteen month cleaning cycle?
No, we don't have the, in writing. It's, it's been standard operating procedures. That has been the goal we set two years ago, but it's nothing in writing.
Yeah, it, it's one of our goals.
Right.
And, and then in this, in this report, it's assumed that we should go to twelve months. You know, I, I sit on Orange County Sand District Board and, um, I know what, what the San Antonio Regional Water Quality Board average is since, since we've done, implemented the waste discharge requirements. And I know what the state is. And, uh, I don't believe it's, I think it's appropriate to have that goal, but I don't believe it's appropriate to staff up uh, and, and buy the equipment to support, um, you know, going, going, going to a twelve month deal. I, I think it's appropriate to have potentially one additional staff member, which would give the existing crews, i- if we can hire, you know, even at the same rate that we are presently hiring. Um, it would give, give them a, one spare person so that we wouldn't be personnel short. So we would have to hire, um, you know, a cleaning contractor. Um, we have budgeted for another, um, sanitary sewer cleaning truck, which would take care of the deficiencies, uh, because we're not able to maintain the existing equipment. Um, you know, if we, if we buy the right equipment. Um, so I, I, I think, I think we should leave the goal at, at eighteen months. Um, cleaning cycle and develop the means of getting there, which would be one, um, a replacement of one of the existing, uh, uh, highly ma- highly required maintenance units, the sewer cleaning truck, the combo, whatever it's called. And also it would give us, you know, one, one additional spare person to keep us from being short of people. Um, and, you know, then that's, that's a probably a couple of million dollar difference in the budget. And then I think we would be closer to, um, you know, I, I also, uh, would, would like to see, um, um, you know, something around an eight, eight plus percent increase. Um, I think that's most of my questions.
If, if I can respond to President Putin's on the two, two staff members, if that's, if that's okay?
Sure.
Thank you. Uh, I disrespectfully disagree. I, I respectfully disagree with that. Um, and the reason why we believe two additional staff members who will be prudent for our operations is, one is coverage. Um, we, uh, have, uh, five employees. We have, we have six, six wastewater, wastewater maintenance workers, five of them are on call. They can get burned out really quickly by being on call all the time. Having some additional staff on, onboard will help alleviate that burnout for being on call. Also, we have, we, we require at least two staffers to work at our pump stations for safety reasons. A lot of times I can't have two staff people there because of coverage. Someone calls out sick, someone's on vacation, um, whatever, I'm, I'm down a staff. So now I got to pull that person from the pump station to go in the clean. Um, and now I've got less work, uh, for maintenance on my maintenance and that can, that can hamper our operations. My, my plan was to come back to the board. We, we discussed adding the, the two additional staffers, uh, before. My plan was to come back again to, to discuss it. Uh, we would like to have it still budgeted. Um, and if you still don't want to go with the two staff, that's fine, but at least have it budgeted, um, to, to hire two additional, uh, wastewater, uh, maintenance workers. We believe it'll be, um, very helpful in our operations and our maintenance. Uh, and it'll, my concern right now is, is, is staff burnout. Staff is, is, is working very hard. Um, and trying to find a contractor is, sounds easy, but it, it's not as easy, you say, because of the availability. I can't just call up someone on the phone, hey, can you be here in two hours? They can't do that. Um, and sometimes they're, they're not available. They're out cleaning somewhere else. It's not as easy as you think, just calling up a contractor to help backfill any, any, uh, employees that are out. So we think the two employees will greatly enhance our, our operations and, and, um, again, um, help prevent sanitary sewer overflows. And that's, that's our primary goal is, is to have zero, zero overflows. But those are my comments on the two, uh, two additional staffers.
Yeah, I'm, um, you know, I would only add that, you know, historically, there have been years when we've had zero sanitary sewer overflows. Yeah. So one, one year, so with one additional person and that, 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 that amount of time additionally cleaning, I don't believe it's, I don't believe it's necessary and I doubt if any of the agencies, uh, have, um, a goal less than the San Antonio Regional Water Quality Control Board, which is just under two. Uh, Orange County Sand District's goal is, is just over two and the state's goal for, or the state's average, as I should say, you know, is, is, uh, I don't know, three and a half, four. Um, I, I don't believe. I I don't believe that there's any concern. The the waste discharge requirements were created by my staff and and implemented in two thousand and two. And the primary reason was to supply EPA and or the state with data on what was practically um tenable. The nineteen seventy two Clean Water Act does have a a section in there that said there there should be no sanitary sewer overflows. Thank God, no one, no, no activist group has uh come after the EPA. So the past num- X number of years has provided the EPA and the state with um, what the waste discharge community or waste discharge goals can practically achieve. So, you know, I I think this, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not concerned about doing a a nine point nine percent rate increase, although I would like to see it, you know, something substantially lower. So let's go around again. Well, let's start at the end.
Why?
Brett.
So in general, I've just got a couple of opinions or suggestions at this point. I think I said in our first meeting, uh, I'd like to see more of a a two-year deal to match our our budget. And the cost of the prop uh eighteen or twelve grand, you know, even round it up a little bit. If you want to throw that into the rate increase, throw it in there, but I think a two years. Right now is a mark set is, I mean, we're in some unprecedented times. Covid really threw us all for a loop in so many different ways. But for our particular purpose. It's just things have skewed because of Covid and because of the inflation and in two years. You know, I'm not sure what two years will look like, let alone five. So I kind of like more of a two-year deal. And I just, I'm kind of stuck on the CPI uh tracking and I'd like to see more of a, you know, a true five percent year-over-year increase. If we move it to eight, I can probably live with it, but somewhere in that ballpark. So I'd like to see something. And if I add any agreement, maybe staff can give further information on a two-year and somewhere between a five and an eight percent increase. But that would be my opinion at this point.
My turn?
Yes.
Okay. You know, right now there's a new trend. The trend is uh gram gam Grammy houses, you know?
Granny flats.
Yeah, granny houses. And so I I was just wondering how we deal with this? Because there's plumbing put in, there's, you know. It's it's a separate little house, but it's all not the same property. Do we have a total of how many we have right now? And does that affect us as far as the rate?
Um, I don't have the, well. Let me back up and say that the granny flat or the groundy houses, they're synonymous with ADU or quote additional dwelling units. So they're running the same. Uh, I don't have the numbers on top of my head and and Scott and I can certainly come back with how many ADUs we've had for this, I'll call it, calendar year so far. But I don't have that number off the top of my head. But that being said, we have had several. But um, I'm gonna say the trend right now, I'm gonna guess is about two hundred, three hundred uh at most in a in a given year. Uh, I I believe that's a trend. Uh, please don't hold me to that, but I'm trying to go off memory of how many I've seen over the last, I'll say, nine months, ten months.
Well, it'd be interesting to see the difference, you know, and how it affects the rate. But uh, as far as uh what we should be doing, I feel that I'm at a part where it can go either way. I just want to hear what some of the staff has said that they haven't had input on to uh what we should really be doing. And I I feel that this is something so important that it's going to, it's going to affect all of us. And sitting up here, we have to have an explanation and we have to have an understanding of what we're doing. And I don't think we should, you know, go too fast on this. That's it.
Do any of the directors have input?
I I came into this meeting thinking that we should just go to a two-year annual increase too, not five years, because not knowing what's gonna happen.
Yeah.
Especially with the city working really hard on this housing element and they're, like, they're saying that possibly, you know, at Fairview Hospital, if that, they were, we were thinking there were gonna be like four hundred units. And I was just told it's probably gonna be fourteen hundred units, not four hundred. So that could be a factor too. So I think that the two-year thing is the way to go. And I'm not sure if we need to uh lower the rates or not. That would be up to the decision the staff would have to make.
Um, taking it onto that Fairview Developmental Center. Have we incorporated probably the single biggest construction project that's gonna happen in Costa Mesa over the next three years is Metro West? And it's fourteen hundred, sixteen hundred units, I think. Whatever. I I'm assuming we've calculated all that into this and and you guys are are good with that. So just to tag on to that. In looking at the fifteen projects. Is there any chance we can take some of these? And use that grant, use any kind of grant possibility? We talked about that a little bit, Scott. I mean, I think it would seem things like calcium removal. Some of these other things might be available to some grant. Application and ironically, you know, we're talking about ductile iron pipe rehabilitation. Will that qualify under the new? The new um. Infrastructure, thank you. Infrastructure bill was signed yesterday. I mean, are we? Now, we're talking a long time out, way beyond five years.
I I wouldn't, I don't recommend delaying the ductile iron pipe because they're corroded.
Yeah.
So we won't have time for that.
Okay, so that infrastructure thing, we may get some trickle down for some of our stuff. But it's not gonna affect this rate cycle either.
No, no, it's not.
Okay. I'm still looking, looking at your table one. I still think we're giving a great deal, if that's the right terminology, to multifamily into commercial. I think the burden on the single-family residents, I would like to see that relaxed or massaged, I guess is probably a better word. And more of that put on um multifamily in commercial. They they've gotten a great deal on those and and I don't know how you do that. I mean, I.
It legally can, because now you're kind of subsidizing the resident, single-family commercial. Everything has to be equal, right? Everything has to be this, be fair. And that's why that's the rates we came up with are fair, equitable rates. You can't, I can't adjust more for the other because you're subsidizing and they can't do that.
Yeah, I I understand. Fair and equitable could always be up for discussion, I mean, debate. But I I I completely understand what you're saying. I don't, I'm not discouraged. It just, I'm throwing out my chum, if you will.
You can, I've heard, you know, looking at maybe the ADU rates might be too. We can definitely look at the ADU rates.
Whatever you can do there.
Vice President, can I just follow up with a question on that, if you don't mind? I I just want to understand this fair and equitable, because I'm I'm on your train of thought here. Can you explain that, Scott? Because I'm, I mean, already a multifamily, it's a hundred percent increase, so.
It's because what Ichigo just said earlier, we weren't, we weren't charging them enough.
Right.
Right, so it'd be equitable, we raised the 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 flow, the amount we estimate how they're gonna be using more higher flow than than we did it, than we estimated in two thousand twelve.
Right.
That's in equitable. Everything is fair and equal. That's why we increased it. We thought they were, they weren't. We estimated too low in two thousand and twelve. So now, yes, unfortunately, we're we're playing catch-up with multifamily.
But what I'm, and I'll end here, but what what if uh, what if instead of that one oh five, one oh nine, we said one fifteen? Why couldn't we do that? On uh the uh multifamily residential, I'm just looking at the fifth year rate, whatever, one oh five. And if we just said, hey, now we want to go one fifteen, how is that not fair and equitable?
Want to increase to one fifteen?
I'm just, I'm saying, if we could, I just didn't understand why we couldn't.
But I guess, Ichigo, maybe you can, if you can chime in, remember, she said, these are the max amounts we can, we can increase. We can't, we we can go lower, but we can't, we can't increase.
So we could reduce single-family from one thirty to whatever we feel like and keep the multifamily at one oh five.
Is that i- i- is that correct, Ichigo? Can they do that?
I think if you don't implement what we propose and um you decided to increase by just a five percent, that five percent should apply to everyone, not just the one customer class. Because these rates are calculated based on the cost of service, right? So we have just one number of revenue requirements, let's say one hundred dollars. And what we decide through cost of service analysis, we say thirty percent of that revenue requirements have to be recovered from multifamily residential customers. And forty percent should be recovered from residential customers. So if we were to increase just one customer class's rates, you will lose that balance, the cost of a service analysis, right? So I wouldn't recommend that. Um, if you're gonna increase by just a five percent, then, you know, you need to apply that five percent to across all customer classes.
Okay, sorry, uh, Vice President.
No, 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 I appreciate that.
Yeah, well, back to that, though, for raising, if you look at the commercial, we're only raising it, we're not even raising it five percent. Forty-one point oh nine to forty-one fifty, that's not even five percent. It's probably like two percent, three percent. If we're, if she's basing the rise at five percent. So that's what Mike's saying, that
Yeah.
Commercial was, seems like they're getting a pretty good deal.
Although you look at the the second year, commercial jumps up uh, you know, a little more substantially. I I, you know, I understand the fair and equitable and I, and I don't want to subsidize, I don't, I I agree with Scott, your comment about subsidizing single-family from everybody else. I I I'm not about doing that. I think everybody understands that sitting up here and talking about raising rates. When we dropped the ball over the last ten years, we just dropped the ball on our rates. And now we're gonna have to make up for it. It's hard, it's hard to swallow that we made a mistake.
Well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say making a mistake. So we always, we always wanted to keep our, remember, we had a an informal policy. We never wanted a rate increase, our solid waste, the wastewater rate simultaneously, right? And so we knew we're gonna increase our our solid waste rates. We knew that was coming down. And so we were gonna increase the solid waste rate. We said, well, let's keep our wastewater rates stable for about three years. Well, then Covid hit. So now that extended us another year. We were, we were actually gonna do this last year. We decided not to do it because of Covid and it was an inappropriate time to do that. So now that delayed another year. And now we're going into looking at increasing it in two thousand, in twenty twenty-two, which is actually five years from now. So I wouldn't say it's a mistake. It was just unforeseen circumstances. And also I think it was just a decision we made to, instead of 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 having less of a burden on on residents of having two rate increases simultaneously.
You always have a way of trying to make us feel better and I appreciate it. I I guess my last comment, Mr. President, and then I'll turn it over to you. I'm intrigued by this two-year situation, simply from the fact that we don't know what's gonna, I think Brett, you just said this, we don't know what's gonna happen in two years. Covid may magically disappear. You know, I'm not, I'm not gonna say that that's truth, but um. With with all the calculations that we throw into these rates, CPI, the CCI, the consumer, what, all those things, we may see some relief in two years. I don't know, but I I'm intrigued and I don't know how we can structure this to re- look at it as a two-year program. And then in two years, we're gonna have to look at where we're sitting up here, just gonna have to look at this five-year. I I don't know if that's.
What we we can do is we can, uh, if you want us to look at two years, we can look at two years, come back, I suggest in December fourteenth, your study session. Uh, we'll bring those those back to you, see what does the budget. Um, I do know you can do that. The the South Coast Water District, um, they did the two-year uh budget increase. They did two years, not five years. The other cities that we mentioned, they all did five, but South Coast Water did it two years. So, yeah, you can, you can do that, but you're just gonna have to do, you know, more Prop two eighteen hearings. That's why you always go five, because it's nice to do it once every five years versus once every two years, right? But just adds a little more cost to it, but.
And I like coming back on the, I I don't want this, I'd prefer not, this not come to the board meeting. I'd rather be at the study session so we can talk about it broader.
That's it. What's our timetable for the Prop two eighteen?
It it, you know, again, you just have to give them um forty, forty-five days notice. My 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 plan, my suggestion was that we were gonna have maybe we, if the board was okay with this, have the the Prop two eighteen hearing on on February twenty eighth. Which means we'd have to get the mailed notices out by January tenth. And we usually have a contractor that does that, right? So we have to get the contract two weeks notice, which means we have to get it to by December twenty seventh. So again, if we have the study session December fourteenth, you're okay with that. We can move it back to you on December twentieth, you can officially adopt it, set a public hearing on that. So we we have time.
Adopt it, what what date, set a board meeting or?
The December twentieth board meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
So at the December board meeting, we'd set the Prop two eighteen process.
Yes, but December fourteenth, we'd come back with two-year plan, show you what that does to the budget and what that.
And then we'll be able to decide between two and five, is that?
Yes.
Sorry, you have time to calculate everything by the next study session?
I I I believe.
And I I just want to be clear, the two and five, but also maybe looking at different rate increases instead of ten percent, five, whatever. More option and information we have, the better is what I would suggest.
Yeah, I, you know, in in two years, the ADU um concept will be clearer. Um, there's a, there's a potential that we'll at least know that we're applying for grants. And I would suggest one of the grants that we apply for is the uh, the two and a half million dollar project for um, you know, a second forced main on the um Euclid, Euclid force mains. Eldon. Um, I'm thinking of math, Eu- Euclidean math, but anyway. And then the 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 impact on Covid, Covid will likely decrease and we'll get a a better perspective. Uh, Director Echols said, you know, the um the future cost of products is decreasing, so we'll have a better perspective on that. Um, actually, the South Coast Water District decided that they would align their increase with their two-year budget. Um, you know, um, I was, I was reading about that, so. It it's not out of the, out of the realm of reason that we could do that. We also should investigate uh potentially alternate ways to uh decrease, you know, staff's uh overtime commitment and and the burnout rate. And that doesn't necessarily mean more staff, or potentially it might not mean more staff. It might mean uh using staff in a different way and or using you potentially even using contractors on a, you know, it's it's a one-year, one or two-day deal to clean a, clean a pump station or or whenever we need to attend a pump station and and then be safe about it. So um, you know, I I think we should explore some of those alternatives. We can also get the data on um. Um, you know, my guesstimates on, well, I I think we also need to decide on a policy issue, two things. On, it won't even be policy. Uh, that is the staff's recommendation that we go to twelve months cleaning instead of eighteen months. And then, secondly, the the biggest specter in my mind is um, you know, the solid waste trace. I think, I think the board agreed, and it's not a policy that we go out every five years and we don't double up on the rates. With eighteen eighty-three here and and potentially, you know, what staff believes. Uh, and I, and I I believe also, uh, we've got significant rehab and rehabilitation needs. And I think those should be um um strongly represented in the budget. And uh, staff's new input today that, uh, you know, I haven't seen how the survey question was worded. Um, but um the the twelve hundred peoples feeling okay was a significant increase in rates. Doubling the rates, basically. Um, you know, we have that information and we'll be able to digest, you know, with the survey results and how the consultant, um, I was gonna say condiment into that perspective. You know, I, I'd like, I'd just like to see what, how this consultant asks that question, you know? Uh, you know, I, I, you know, I think staff is, or and the directors, uh, have made a lot of important, at least questions. So I appreciate all of your due diligence. Uh, do any of the directors have any more input? And Scott, what, if, 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 um, and we need to come back, staff needs to come back to tell us what it, it sounds like, um, a, a two-year, two-year, uh, Prop eighteen sanitary sewer overrates is beginning to gel with, with, with the directors. Um, so you need to come back as soon as possible, you know, figure out what the schedule is. Um, I'm not opposed to going to, you know, nine point nine percent. I'd like to see something lower, but, um, anyway, any other directors need to weigh in? No, I think, thank you, thank you, staff and thank you consultant and thank, thank you board members for, um, your due diligence and I think pertinent questions, um, some of which have been answered and some of which need to be answered, so. Um, if there are no further questions, does, does staff have any need for more input? Okay, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.